Okay. I think we need to reconvene, so I need a motion to reconvene, open session. Thank you, John, and then the second, Angie. All in favor of reconvening? Right there. Okay. I'd like to welcome you this evening. I know, I can tell that it's a packed house. But we're glad you're here.
We're glad you're here.
You guys can stand, we'll, and we'll say please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So we'll get into our recogni-, our recognitions. We have several, I believe. We'll start with Mr. Allison and the junior high.
Mr. Allison? That's okay. He's at the HHS Classic tonight.
Okay.
So we have a lot of recognitions. We were kind of late to the game in getting some of those in, so we have several.
Okay.
So for our fall season student athletes, we would like to recognize the athletes and coaches for their academic accomplishments. The cheer and junior high ads, GPAs will be calculated after the season's over in January. But we have seventh grade football. Coach Horn with a 3.14 average GPA. 4.0 to Preston Brown, Cole Losman, and Carter Stevenson. Eighth grade football, Coach Horn, a 3.26 overall GPA. 4.0 from Peyton Brown, Nick Dotson, A.J. Heitzel, Gavin Height, Logan Johnston, Dalton Ross, and Chase Saharsky, sorry. Cross-country boys, Coach Holland, 3.28 overall GPA. With a 4.0 from Nick Marchetti, Colin Schneider, and Richard Weehaw. Eighth grade volleyball, Coach Tucker, a 3.52 overall GPA, with 4.0s by Abby Helmig and Kaylee Hilton. Cross-country girls, coached by Ethan Gosling, a 3.58 overall GPA, with 4.0s from Olivia Brandon, Gillian Mayer, Kyrian Pollock, Ellie Short, and Morgan Sue Camp. Seventh grade volleyball, with our highest overall GPA of 3.61, coached by Coach Tucker, with 4.0s by Shay Howen, Ellie Ludwig, Evelyn Overall, Olivia Peters, and Gillian Woods. Our next recognition, we would like to recognize one of our teachers for his continued education. Coach Dave Pierce recently passed his last test and is now a nationally recognized certified strength and conditioning specialist. This program took Coach Pierce over a year to complete, with hundreds of hours studying topics such as nutrition, chemistry, physiology, kizology. And just like many of our other Hillsborough staff, Coach Pierce's dedication to lifelong learning serves as a reminder to our students that education does not stop after graduation. So congratulations to Dave on his accomplishment. The junior high would like to recognize the following band students for their selection as an all-district performer. All-district concert band, first chair trumpet to Alex Lee, second chair trumpet to Robert Barantin. Sixth chair trumpet to Robert Barantin. Alternate for baritone sax, Kai Imhoff. First chair professional Clayton Schneider. And all-district jazz, Bobby Barantin, fifth trumpet, Lucas Navo on piano, Scott Hartnberger on bass, Clayton Schneider drum set, Luke Bone, alternate tenor sax, Seth Parton, alternate drum set, and Amy Corey, alternate trombone. The junior high cross-country had a great year. The boys team placed second at conference, barely edging out the Soto by one point. There were six. Richard Weehaw, Alex Padge, Clayton Schneider, Sam Wall, Owen Andeline, and Nick Marchetti. Boys placing in the top 20 at the conference race. Richard Weehaw posted the best time within eight-two minutes of his row during the 2,500 K race, sorry. The girls team had a huge beat with Lauren Nichols, winning the conference meet with a 9.16, running after placing second last year to another Hillsborough student. The girls team had five, Lauren Nichols, Emily Wright, Madeline Shelby, Josie Crosby, and Carrie Anne Pollock, runners in the top 25. And we couldn't have been more impressed with their efforts that these kids put into, and we look forward to their next year. Overall, boys, two first-place wins, Northwest and Antonia. Girls, first place at Northwest, and that was, those were coached by Gosling and Holland. The junior high would like to recognize our English department and students for their amazing accomplishment of reading 1,555 books this quarter. Ms. Merrily is the department chair that spearheads the reading rates incentives and quarterly assemblies. We want to especially recognize the 13 students who rang the victory bell because they read over 10 books during the first quarter, some up to 25. And that was Nolan Cook, Caleb Scanlon, Haley Langston, Ryan Mueller, Willan Aguilar, Katie Lynn Dolan, Scarlett Hasty, Samuel Pierce, Joey Novatney, Raylan Oaks, Macy Bergeman, Anthony Langston, and Caden Smith.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on then to recognitions for the high school with Dr. Green.
Good evening. We'd like to share with you that sophomore Michelle Jones, junior Abby Couch, junior Emma Wright, and freshman Josh Allison all qualified for the state cross-country meet, which was held in Columbia, Missouri on November 9. We would also like to share that the National Honor Society successfully organized this year's Safe Halloween. We had over 250 children attend. 177 items were donated to the Hillsborough Food Pantry, and $81.50 was donated for next year's Safe Halloween. And also, later in the month, National Honor Society inducted 59 new members at their induction ceremony on Tuesday, November 5. And Mr. Reednaud did not, he was actually very amazing as our guest speaker, and we thank you very much, Mr. Reednaud, it was wonderful. The following students were selected to all-district concert band on Tuesday, November 5. Allison Dietrich, who plays clarinet, Aprila Massal, clarinet, Peter Moravec, trombone, Elijah Tucker, trombone, Jeremy Lovier percussion. Honorable mentions were Jenna Brock on the tenor sax, and Chase Granda on trombone, and Damian Edmund on percussion. And the following students were selected to all-district jazz band on Tuesday, November 5. Chris Jett on tenor sax, Ian Shelton on trumpet, Chase Schnaff on drum set, Jeremy Lovier on drums, and Peter Moravec on trombone, with honorable mentions Elijah Tucker on trombone, and Jude Short on drums. And our drama club was proud to present Newsies last weekend, November 14 through the 17th. A highly talented casting crew worked exceptionally hard to put on a spectacular production. And we are so thankful for the leadership of the students, Mrs. Lee Calista and Ms. Stephanie Williams. It was phenomenal. So if you got to see it, good for you, because it made your life a little bit happier. It was awesome. And I'm exceptionally proud to tell you that at the September Misha AV and Principals Meeting, Mr. Edward Marino was named the Southeast Region Athletic Director of the Year. And HHS would like to congratulate him on receiving this honor.
Okay. And then we'd like to hear from Mrs. Carroll.
I'm really short, Carol. I'm gonna include the intermediate. So I want to congratulate Jane Reed, who's a fourth grader, and Marshall Bedell, who's a fifth grader. They made the first Missouri All-State Elementary Choir, and in January they'll be participating at a music, uh, conference in Tantara. So I know our music teacher was extremely proud of these two kiddos, and I'm sure Mrs. Arnold was too, so it's a big deal for our kiddos.
Okay, so did we miss anybody? All right. So we'll move on then to the consent items on the consent agenda. Okay. So I need a motion then to approve all items on the consent agenda. I would like to pull the minutes, why, October 24th? But you were just gonna abstain.
Oh, wait, why would you?
It's okay, we'll pull the minutes, and we talked about a different plan. Okay. So we'll, we'll hold those, those minutes, and we'll vote on the consent agenda for all the other items. Just removing, which item was that? What one? B, yeah, letter B. It's printed real small. Okay. So I need a motion then to approve all the items except for letter B. Thank you, Beth, and then John as a second. Any other questions or concerns about the items on the consent agenda? All right? All in favor of approving those items? Raise your hand, please. Okay. Now, I need a motion to approve the board minutes from October 24th. Thank you, John and Beth. Any issues with that, questions? All in favor of approving the board minutes? Okay, very good. And, well, we already have that, but okay. And abstaining would be a danger. All right. Let's move on to the superintendent report.
All right, just a few quick things. In front of you, you have an invitation to the event on Saturday, December 14, the community open house, starting in the afternoon at 3 o'clock at the junior high, the elementary, and the primary. And I will let Dr. Freeman-Hern, Janelle Frasco, have been working diligently to put this card together and put, kind of organize the event, gathering input from all staff. So I'm gonna let you kind of talk about some of the things you have planned and for that day.
Well, we're really excited to host this event because we need to thank our constituents and our stakeholders and everyone who got out and voted, and they need to be able to see all of our new construction additions and see where we've been putting their money. So that's gonna be really exciting. And then they also need to come and visit the farm and see what that's gonna be like. And I love the fact that we are working in conjunction with the city of Hillsborough with their parade. And the jean style course tournament is that evening also, so the town is going to be packed. But they'll be funny to do for anyone who's interested in whatever it is they're interested in. This is all Janelle Frasca, she came up with everything. I just look at things and tell her it looks great, or take a comment here, or whatever. Dr. Isaacson edited it as well, but she just is amazing with graphics. So we've got invitations, you have one in front of you. We've got several of those made. If you'd like to invite someone, please let me know, and I'll give you some invitations. We've got flyers ready to go for businesses, and we've got posters ready for each of our buildings as well. So right now, we're planning on having those, those schools open on the times that we have listed. And then we're going to have the farm open that evening, and we have carolers, so there will be music. There will be a tree lighting as soon as Ray gets me to go with him to find the tree, because I've been a little busy. So we're gonna go plant our own tree down from our own farm and bring it up by the barn. And we'll decorate some of the fencing, and the goats will be there to wish everyone merry little joy with harnesses and lights, and it's just gonna be really neat. We've got bonfires planned, and smores, and snacks, and it'll just be really, and then tours of the, of the property. So it'll be really good. So I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. I had a gentleman stop by, if you remember Dr. Bundrick, who worked for, he's actually working with US Census in our area, and asked if we would be willing to partner with the Census because of trying to get an accurate count with the grant, due to grant writing and Title I and the economy. And put some information in here, just talk about the importance of it, if the district would be willing to partner from the standpoint of inviting our staff members, or anyone that may be willing to work during the summer to do that. I'm not supposed to publicly tell the salary, but it's a lot of money. Like, I'm like, in the summer, I may, yeah, I may be working the Census. No, but it is, but it is something that I would, they can look it up on US Census, and it'll tell you, if you work in Jefferson County, it's, it's much more than you would expect. To work for their, and like, follow up with, we do what, he asked if some of our teachers, or anyone, paraprofessionals, or anyone in the district would be willing to do that, would share that, or provide a room such as this for doing training for people that are going to work there and do that. And so, I said I'm busy with the board, but is there any objections to it? It seems fairly straightforward. So I will then, and then I'll follow up and just kind of move forward, sharing some of that information with our staff and community members, maybe even some of our government teachers, if somebody kind of talks about that. And then on the ABR.
I'm just hoping to do the ABR report this month, but the site's not working yet, and they are in lager until tomorrow.
That's all I have?
All right. So we'll move to the financial report then, then, just to get.
Oh, really? I wanted to tell you something. As far as how we're tracking right now with our budget and with our revenue and our expenditures, we're right on target, like we usually are. So, you can look at the graphs, you can see the lines. But we are right on target with how we should be at this point in the year. Our balances are going down, we're gonna start getting our tax revenue in, hopefully early December. But that timing always varies somewhat with the cities, so we look forward to getting that. The only other thing is the audit. Typically, I have that for you this year. I hope to have it at least a week in advance of the meeting. They are still, actually, they're coming out tomorrow, they're calling change. They're coming out tomorrow and one day next week to wrap everything up. Jesse delayed opening some of the federal programs, final expenditure reporting, like our IDEA, and that's a major program, so they tested, because you get $700,000 a year in that money. So they tested pretty heavily, but that wasn't even open until early November.
About two weeks ago.
Yeah, a couple weeks ago. So we got that all submitted, but they haven't audited still, so that slowed us down a little bit. I will have it to you as soon as I can get to you. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, dear. All right. We'll move on to our technology report.
Good evening. I submitted 103 work orders, completed 103 work orders. I'll stay on top of that with that, so sometimes one work order can be a few-day project, or, you know, or multiple hours. It's kind of a smaller number, but wrapping some bigger projects. One of those is our Windows 7 upgrade. Windows 7 is going out of support in January, coming up, and we're wrapping up the rest of those upgrades from 7 to Windows 10, and that's been a big project for us. We mapped out our wireless access points to know where the locations are at. So we had some that, we weren't sure exactly where they were at. We knew they were in this building, so we walked around and made sure that was, we knew where those were at, and that'll help us. We have less interference, better performance, hopefully, with the result of that. So we still have some tweaking to do now, now that we know where those are at. That's one of the projects we did. We also replaced our computer lab at the high school. They're experiencing some pretty slow issues with their computers since they're using newer software. It's just kind of one of those unexpected results that are happening with those older computers. So we're able to upgrade those, and now they're performing well. Able to use their instructional lab time a lot better, versus leaving on the computers below. Yeah, so that's been really nice. And they also are able to utilize 3D software, or 3D function in the software they're using, which is pretty cool, so they're excited about that. And then we're also implementing it in the campus, online registration. We're trying to go digital with online registration, and the goal there is for data accuracy and process efficiency. Hopefully, we'll spend maybe less work hours on our side, and then it might be a little more time on our community, that, and parents to fill out forms, but hopefully we'll have more accurate data. That process will be more streamlined and better.
Thank you. Okay. We don't have any unfinished business, so we'll dive into the new business. First item is the notice of filing dates for the next school board election this spring. And Dr. Isaacson, you have a notice to read.
This is a notice of filing dates for the 2020 school board election. Notice is hereby given to the general public that the opening filing date for school board elections will be Tuesday, December 17, 2019, beginning at 8 o'clock AM. Interested parties may file at the superintendent's office during regular business hours. Candidates may file for one of the three, three-year terms. Individuals will file for the term length to serve as a member of the Board of Education. The closing date for filing shall be Tuesday, January 21, 2020, at 5 o'clock PM. If the school is closed due to inclement weather, the filing office will be closed as well. Adjusted hours during the holiday season will be posted at the superintendent's office. To qualify for the position of board director, a candidate must be a citizen of the United States, a resident taxpayer of the district, who has resided in the state for one year preceding his or her election or appointment, and who is at least 24 years of age, not delinquent in the payment of any state income taxes, personal property taxes, municipal taxes, or real property taxes, having not been found guilty of a felony or misdemeanor under federal laws of the United States of America, or a felony under Missouri law, or an offense committed in another state that would be considered a felony in Missouri, not registered or required to be registered as a sex offender. Publication of this notice fulfills the requirements of revised Missouri statute, section 115.127 subsection 5, done at the regular monthly meeting during November 21, 2019, by the Boards of Education. Those were our three, school districts, superintendent's office, located at 5 Woodswood Drive, Hillsborough, Missouri, 63050. Board Secretary Bethany Johnson.
Any other thoughts or comments on that before we move on? All right, good. All right. We'll move on then to the next item, which is the appointment of a new board secretary. Bethany Johnson is retiring in December, effective the 19th, so we need to appoint a new one. So I have a motion to approve Betsy Noack to serve as the Board of Education Secretary. Thank you, Beth and John. Any discussion? All in favor of approving Betsy? Next item is the approval of the new school calendar, calendar for 2020 and 21. The recommendation is to approve it. So I need a motion then to approve the calendar as presented. Okay, so I, did you get Rob or anything? Actually, I need to get, okay. You can take Angie, we'll take Rob for a sec. Okay, any discussion on the calendar? After you've been watched, staff, could you give any other, um, questions?
Four. Two says, "Thank you," and two inquire about spring break.
And I would like to make this kind of known that, you know, because of the tourist industry, we have to stop, start later. And if you are not happy about that as educators, or as, well, as students, maybe not, but educators, reach out to your legislators, because many of them have told me personally that this is a fluid. You know, the tourist industry has been trying to do this for several years. So just put that on your list to do.
On the big items was because of Missouri State Fair. The attendance has been low. So I don't know if this is like an increase of attendance, we'll have to see what happens.
Yeah.
Thought that was a little odd. Not sure where we could go to that anyway. Okay. So the motion on the floor then is to approve that 2021 school calendar. All in favor of approving that calendar? Okay, very good. The next item is to approve the addition of cartoon and comic book drawing course. That's going to be adopted into the art course at the high school. So I need a motion to approve this new course. Thank you, Beth and John. Any questions or discussion about this new class? Okay. All in favor of approving the comic book cartoon class at the high school? All right. Thank you, Mary, thank you. Motion carries. The next item is a proposal of the new junior high and senior high social studies elective courses at the, why is it at the high school?
It's junior, it's junior.
Senior level, sorry. I was like, junior high, I'm confused. Okay. So we, I need a motion to approve the adoption of two high school elective courses. It's an Eastern Civilization and a Modern World History course. Thank you. Any discussion about those two courses? Okay, all in favor of approving this addition? The next item has to do with the new calendar, or sorry, new committee. And this committee is a board-appointed committee to help with the Bridle Ridge property. So we have a motion then to approve a committee to recommend names for the new property. It was a little odd, uh, same, but.
Oh, I'm glad I vomit.
And you had many volunteers for this committee?
Yes, and it's still growing. I think we're north of 18.
Do they have it there? Just appointed by you?
No, oh, no, I sent out, it'll be, with committees, kind of the planning committee, we're using the facility and we're supporting more than that, but that'll be one of the charges, do that sooner rather than later. Unfortunately, that won't be done prior to the, about the 14th, but.
I'd hope to see a good combination of community staff.
Sure.
So far, we have two community members, and I know that there's gonna be some more that are interested. There's a lot of, a lot of staffs and paraprofessionals, administrators.
Okay. Any other thoughts about this committee? Okay, so the motion is to approve the committee that will review the recommendations. All in favor?
Three, remember.
Who knows? We may use it for a long. We may use it for a long, depends on how things go. All right, and then I believe the last item? Oh, letter G, that's the item, H works. Okay, so we have the Chestnut Health Issue. It's been recommended and discussed in previous meetings, so we need a motion to approve the Chestnut Memorandum of Understanding and the Business Associate Qualified Service Organization Agreement. Okay, so John and Beth.
How about Rob?
Okay. That's my.
What did you say?
No? Well, she always does it, so.
Really?
Sorry. Okay, any other discussion or questions about this issue, the MOU or the VAA, which Chestnut Health? Okay, all rise good, Beth? So, all in favor of approving those items, raise your hand? Okay. Thank you for attending. We're excited. It's going to be a great program. All right, and the last item is dealing with the employee health insurance assessment. I don't have a question.
There's seven or eight.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so I need a motion to approve payment in the amount of $707,423.27 for the assessment to the SSEC, our health insurance claim.
Reluctantly, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Rob did that. And Beth did the second.
Okay, I'll second. Go ahead, that would be helpful.
Okay, we'll put that in there reluctantly.
Should I reluctantly vote now?
Yes.
So $700,000, where's that going to come from?
Hopefully, we are next.
Does that mean it's coming from reserves? I mean, what's our reserves at? Do you know all the?
Well, at the end of the year, it was 50%, so I mean, we're going, but it's going to shoot back up. I mean, do I have a percent right?
I'm just saying, what kind of hit is this on the reserves? That's what I'm really trying to get.
Probably 3%.
3%?
We're going to have around 11%.
We want to really be at 20, right?
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Going in the wrong direction? And this is basically from fraud. I mean, the brokers have kind of done us wrong here, because our premium amounts were not quoting what they should have been, especially when six of our healthy schools left our consortium, and our claims are running significantly higher, and they were hiding it.
We, in the superintendents of the other 21 schools, feel like they have fiduciary responsibility to, they're experts in that field. Hey, if you guys need to reset your rates, then you take your medicine and do that, because at the end of the day, you're self-funded, there are bills, and we have to make sure that they're paid so that our staff can get the medical care that they need and not have that pass along. This will fund the outstanding claims, because we have to maintain about over $700,000 in there, but there could be more, depending on what occurs. I have a meeting tomorrow with the insurance consortium and the other superintendents to try to decide on the future and best laid plans to do. One thing that's difficult is each district, there's a different move for each one of them that benefits them. And so to get consensus on this, I'm concerned that the more likely scenario is.
They're not going to vote to dissolve.
They won't vote to dissolve. I, but I don't, I'm purely speculating, because it's been a week since our last meeting, and it could go several different directions. As a district, we've been laying the groundwork to try to, you know, we're in November, it is in December, where the first dissolving is a huge issue. It ties our hands even on flexibility from a carrier standpoint, so.
But getting out of the, I mean, dissolving would be the best way to get out of this, right?
Dissolving provides the most opportunities for school districts because of some rules that UHC has, is if the SSEC exists, a school district cannot go to another consortium that uses the UHC as their carrier. Now, UHC will take you on as an individual, they want your business, they want, but if you're dissolved, then your organization doesn't exist. So we have several initial quotes, and Hillsborough, while we're not running below 100%, we are still very marketable now because of our size and good training culture, but we hope to have the opportunity to take advantage of that. But that's where Hillsborough lies. There's some school districts that are part of the consortium, they're running at 285%. When they got a fully funded rate, it was upwards of, you know, to put in perspective, our HSA, we paid, and it's one-for-all right now, approximately $475. Their HSA quoted account was $1,200 per month per year. I mean, that's, but in lieu of that, that's where.
So who is the broker, and who's the broker that's been doing the?
USI.
USI, and UHC is the one that's been kind of sort of abetting this misdirection here?
We, I just want to be clear. We rely on those.
Just want to be clear in front of the camera here.
Sure. We rely on those two companies to provide us the fiduciary.
I mean, we pay, we kind of, we kind of, they're the money managers and they write.
Oh, and they get a significant amount of money.
To do the adventure.
Do that, absolutely. And how they go about like, running the claims and reporting the claims, we need accurate information, the good, the bad, the ugly, to make the decisions, is.
And they've been leading us in the dark.
There's, we didn't set the appropriate rates based on the information or recommendations that were made by our consortium and UHC to say, hey, tap the rates, you probably need to charge more, et cetera, so.
I know you mentioned to me in conversation that you went to the insurance board and they didn't even want to deal with it, but I just want to put it.
I did not, that's what was passed along to me when, by the president of the SSEC.
I just would like to say, if anyone else wants to, I'm going to write to the attorney general about this behavior. Okay? If anyone else wants to join me or just let me know, we can write a letter about this, because I'm kind of mad, so, I mean, it's crooked, maybe.
It's no secret.
Well, it's crooked.
Any other thoughts or discussion? Okay, so the motion then is to approve payment in the amount of $707,423, sorry, $704, I can't say the number now, $707,423.27. All in favor of making that payment? Okay, motion carries then. All right, we'll be looking forward to hearing what happens tomorrow.
We don't have some, some progress yet.
All right, so that concludes our new business. We're going to recess, open session for a few minutes. We still have an item to take care of in executive session, so we need a motion to recess. Thank you, Beth and John. All in favor of recessing? Thank you very much. Glad to thank the rest of you for your attendance this evening.